And then we have a roll call.
Mr. Valentini?
Yeah.
Mr. McFarland?
Yeah.
Mr. Strazza?
Here.
Mr. Rivera? I'm sorry, there was feedback. Is that a here? No. No Rivera. Okay. Uh, Mr. Noonan?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
I'm here.
And Chairperson Harris? Take that as a here.
Yes.
Okay, one, two, three, six present and one absent.
So we have a quorum.
Yep.
Okay, I'd like, is there, can we review the minutes? Any comments? I have the minutes, I, I had sent in several from around the minutes that were in error and a few pages, so I think they're already, I don't have to go over them, right?
So I make a motion to accept the minutes as is with those pages?
There were six comments that I had. There were mostly typos on page three that I'll just send in, and I sent in a couple pages four and five that had several mistakes in them, so I don't have to read them, right? You got that?
Um, I, the, the, the problem is with, with not raising them in front of the commission is that, um, they would be voting on amendments that they're not aware of, so have these been distributed to the commission? To the board? I'm sorry.
No, I just sent it to Katie and it emailed.
If they have not, the Open Meetings Act will allow us to approve them at the next meeting, so if there are a number of amendments, I, I think we either need to take them as the board has seen them, or add the, or go over them specifically today, or if there is a number of them and we want to move along with a lot of, because I think we have a line of people outside, maybe what we should do is just take a, a motion to, uh, to, uh, move this item to next month's meeting, and, uh, after, if that's approved, then we'll just move that on and distribute those things so they can be looked at next month.
That's okay with me, is that's okay with taking a motion to approve these next meetings as corrected?
Yes. So tabling the agenda, I, this will be a motion to table the agenda item regarding review of the minutes to next month's regular meeting.
Yes. And, okay. Can I, I make some, I make that motion?
One second.
Ms. Smith? Yeah.
It's, Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza? Is there, Mr. Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And Chairperson Harris? Yes. Chairperson Harris? Okay.
Most curious. We'll move on to the next.
So, George, um, just to, I'm sorry, we did have two people register for public comment. Sandy White and Bradley Breakbill. They are not on the call right now. I, I don't know if they are in the, the public comment room, but I just wanted to let you know that there were two people that registered.
Are we able to find out if they're present? Like in the, are they in the public comment room? Are we able to check?
Yes, they, it looks like Ms. White is maybe in the, in the public comment room, and so, um, public comment would be about something that is not on the agenda.
He's here for the fence, for my
That is an agenda item.
Oh. Sandy White's here for the metal ridge, for the fence variance. For public comment.
Okay, well, if it's an agenda item, and, uh, you will have an opportunity to speak during that. The consideration of that item.
I can speak when they're on that topic.
Okay, she, she will have time to speak, because I'm not Sandy White.
Okay, yes, she will.
Okay.
Well, and are you here for public comment for something that's not an agenda item?
No, we're the, I was going to say the first one.
Oh, sorry, I was
Oh, okay.
We're, we're, we're for stuff on the agenda.
Okay, never mind, so we're okay.
Well, it sounds like, now, there is a line out there, so the potential of those people are in the liner, is that, is that where we're at on that?
There's a public comment, and it's not on the agenda item.
So it, it does sound like the it sounds like everybody who's waiting outside is waiting to speak on an agenda item as well.
Okay. I think we're okay with proceeding at that point. We, we, we don't have any contact, any way to get ahold of the folks, uh, who had signed up to speak. Is that accurate?
I believe that they, um, either accidentally registered for public comment or, uh, would prefer to speak on the agenda. I don't believe there's anybody wishing to provide public comment on an item that's not on the agenda.
Okay, and we move to, um, SP 0720, 2420. The staff has, um, recommended that we table this item because it's a separate property and a different owner, so do I need to move for a recommendation to table this until, and, until it is approved? Until the, the, the other part is approved?
I'm sorry, Ms. Harris, let me, let me clarify that. Um, the, the staff recommendation to table is actually on item C. So, item A, the use, the used vehicle sales, um, the applicants are here and staff is recommending, we have a, a separate recommendation to move forward on that one, so we're prepared to give a staff report if you'd like.
No, I didn't understand what, what you told me before. Okay. All right, so let's hear the staff report.
Okay, okay, I'm going to share my screen here and pull up the presentation. Are you able to see my screen? Okay, thank you. Uh, so case SP 07-20 is for a special use permit to allow vehicle sales in the B1 general, uh, commercial district at, uh, 2426 South Main Street, uh, in Bloomington. Uh, staff is recommending in favor, but we are, uh, asking the board to consider adding a condition. I'll explain in a second, but it's, there is a, a, a pending development to, to develop residential adjacent to this, and so staff is recommending a s- additional screening to help mitigate any impacts that the, the used car dealership could have on that residential. The property 20, 2426 South Main Street is located, uh, along US 51, it's a major arterial road. Uh, it's also, uh, bordered by South Gate Drive on the north. Uh, the property was originally built in the seventies and was used as a Toyota dealership previously. Um, its most recent use, however, was, uh, furniture sales, and it has been vacant, it's currently vacant at the moment. Uh, here's just an aerial of that site as well. Uh, north of here is a gas station and some other retail, uh, oriented businesses, fast food uh, stores. South of here is kind of outdoor storage, outdoor display and retail, and then east is currently vacant. There's a, a potential, the, this planning commission rezoned the property east of here last year, um, and the, the owner is, has recently received Lytec credits to do an affordable housing project on that site, so it's, it's possible that there could be residential here in the future, and, um, there's also a mobile home park east of here, and then west is, uh, manufacturing and mini warehouses and storage. Just kind of another look at the zoning map. Uh, north and, and south are B1, and then east is B2 and R4, which is our mobile home uh, district, and then west of here is the manufacturing district. Uh, these are some photos of the surrounding uses, which I just described. Uh, the north is gas stations, south is kind of some outdoor storage and retail, uh, east and west as well. Another photo of the west side, so there's currently a little bit of landscaping, but, um, and, and a little bit of drainage, but the condition that staff would be asking for would be something that would allow for, you know, uh, landscaping on this site, like a, like a fence, or, you know, a three, at a minimum, a three-foot fence to shield for headlights, but you could do a maximum of six foot, uh, in the business districts. And, uh, the site plan that's included in your packet and provided, uh, there's currently 32 parking spaces. Uh, the applicant, before being able to get a building permit, would also need to add an additional accessible space. Our code requires one per 25, and so after you've hit that 25 mark, you'll need to add another one, so, so there would be two that could easily be accommodated right here next to that with the shared aisle. And then also, any, any dumpsters would need to be screened from the right-of-way as well. Um, there's not a dumpster shown on the plan, but there's one in the back currently. Uh, looking at the comprehensive plan, you know, this is a infill priority, uh, it also, um, it allows the use of existing infrastructure, existing buildings. And, uh, and so, you know, staff looked at the, the standards for a special use permit. Uh, we found that the, the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding uses, um, and that the impacts would not, uh, impede normally in, normal and orderly development, um, but we would recommend that the zoning board consider adding a condition that if or when residential goes in east of here, that, that a fences is put up to help mitigate any headlights and any, um, additional noise from vehicles being driven on the site. All ingress is existing, there's no proposed changes, all utilities are existing and adequate, and as I mentioned, the site was previously used as a a car dealership, so we are recommending in favor, um, and then asking the board to consider that condition. I can answer any questions you might have, and the applicants are also here at City Hall.
Wait, um, four, we can, comprehensive stands, two and four descend. Is there something that's missing?
No, I, I think, um, yeah, you're right, I, I doubled it, so, just wanted to emphasize, it's a infill, infill spot, I guess, but
Can I make some, some corrections to the text?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Ms. Harris.
Correction to the text?
Sure, I can, we can amend the staff report to remove that second, that second, uh, bullet point, that redundancy, it's fine.
Background, you have flooring retailers spelled wrong, and it says it has since, it says it has since, how was it said? It should be it has since, how is it said?
Okay, noted. Any, any other questions for us?
Okay, then, can we approve the staff report and go on to the action? Staff recommendation? Item by item? Any? Is there any more comments about the staff report?
Yeah, I think then we'd start to be taking, uh, testimony from the applicant. Is that where we're at?
Like, where?
I believe the applicant has a representative or an attorney, and, and who else do we have for the applicant, Ms. Simpson?
We have, uh, a, a few people here at City Hall. Would let them introduce themselves, I think they're coming up to the, to speak.
Hello? Can you guys see ours?
Okay, you say your name and, and your affiliation, and you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I swear.
Say your name and your affiliation.
My name is Errol, uh, I'm the son of the owner, and at the same time, I'm gonna be the manager of the new place. Uh, this is my dad. Go ahead.
My name is Ramazan. Swear to tell the truth.
Yes.
Swear to tell the truth, thank you. So, can we have your statement, your application?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Proposal. Your request?
I'm sorry, that's all right, Victoria, we're having a really hard time hearing you in here, so, um, is there any way, maybe you could bring the phone closer to you in order for us to pick it, pick it up, please?
Do you hear me anything at all?
Um, very slightly.
I, I'm, I don't, I don't know what to do.
Oh, that's, that's
Sure, you sound better there.
Proposal?
There you go.
Okay, what was the question, I'm sorry?
No, I can't hear anything.
Well, no one's saying anything yet. Um, all right, so, we, it sounds like we have two potential witnesses. Is that accurate at this point? We have Errol, um, Er- Errol, are you gonna be testifying first, or would you, or will your father, uh, be testifying first?
Uh, I can do it first.
Okay, could you state your full name, please, for the record, so, Errol, is it, can you, uh, state your name and spell it, please?
Uh, Errol Muharamoski, uh, E-R-O-L, last name, M-U-H-A-R-E-M-O-S-K-I.
All right, and I, I think, Ms. Harris, you had, you had some questions for, uh, the first witness?
Project description?
That was a, a description?
Yes.
Okay. Sir, could you describe the, uh, the project that's envisioned?
Yes, uh, so we, the name of the project is, uh, to use it as a used car dealership, uh, at the property 2426 South Main Street. It used to be, uh, Flooring America Place before, um, but we want to utilize it for a car dealership. We currently, my dad currently owns a, uh, repair shop at Normal, uh, Twin City Garage in Normal, Illinois. Uh, so we're gonna sell cars at 2426 South Main Street while repairing it at our shop in Normal, Illinois. We are planning to have, uh, at least like 20 to 30 cars on the lot outside. Uh, I know there is a condition, uh, for fencing, and that was on the plan for us as well, to put that fencing on the side where, um, you have stated that there's gonna be a potential, uh, residential area. Uh, we were planning to put that fencing before that area is actually developed, um, for our own safety purposes and for, um, a requirement as well. Uh, also, I, I heard that there is a requirement for an additional parking space, if I was not mistaken, uh, which we're gonna provide that, and, uh, for the dumpster, are you, you're requiring for a fencing around the dumpster, or just to not be visible on the side of the, the road? Uh, what exactly, can you, um, specify more so we know exactly what, what needs to be done so we can get it done?
Additional screening such as a fence or landscaping along the east property line to mitigate the impacts of residence, residential areas surrounding?
Correct, that's gonna be done and completed, uh, hopefully before, uh, the fencing, before we open, uh, uh, a spring hits, uh, we're gonna do all the landscaping, um, that's the plan, for that area and all the other sides of the property. And I think there was a landscaping plan provided as well, um, to the board.
Is there any testimony from your father?
So this is for car sales, not for repairs, is that correct, sir?
Correct, yes, just, uh, car sales, car dealership, no repairs. We already own a shop in Normal, Illinois for repairs.
Did, did we answer your question with regard to the, the trash dumpsters?
Uh, no. I, I haven't, I didn't hear, I didn't hear, maybe you did, but I, I haven't heard.
Katie, he was asking, does the, the trash dumpsters need to be enclosed, um, or can they just not be visible from the street?
The code requires that they're not visible from the street.
So, on the back of the street, it's where we need screening, so basically on the east side and then the side on the, of the building, so it's not visible from the other side? Is that what you're talking about?
That's right, yeah, they just, uh, the ordinance requires that you can't see the dumpster when you're in the public right-of-way.
Okay, sounds good, we'll take care of that. When the fencing is done, we're gonna do it as an L shape, so it's not visible from the building and on, on the other side. Do we, sorry, uh, do we need to request another permit for the fencing, or we can do it anytime?
I, if you, Chairperson Harris, I can address that if you'd like, or if you want me to wait until after?
Oh, please address it.
Okay. The, uh, if, you will need a fence permit, but you can apply for that, um, through the Building Safety Division, so that's separate from this special use permit.
Okay, sounds good.
Do you have, do you, Errol, do you have a, an issue with a six-foot fence requirement?
Uh, no, whatever is required, we'll provide it.
Thank you for your testimony. I think now we have some witnesses in
I'm sorry, I, I can't, we can't hear you over here.
Any other questions for the, for the, for the applicant?
We have not, I have not heard.
Okay.
Sorry, well, we just, it's, it, we, we have a hard time hearing over here, and I don't know what, why.
All right. There's something, I'm sorry for that. So if there are no more questions, can we have, call for a public comment on this?
Yeah, I, I don't have any questions, uh, if you have any questions, please let me know, and I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, thank
Thank you.
So my understanding so far is, just to kind of help, hopefully clarify things, is that we do have the actual applicant himself uh, here, that was the applicant's son, um, do we have, does the applicant want to add anything or testify on his own, uh, behalf, or on behalf of the, uh, special use, or, or are there others who may wish to testify in favor?
No.
Okay, thank you to the applicants. Do we have any public comments for, in favor or against the application?
Thank you.
Ms. Harris, no, but nobody else, uh, registered in advance of the meeting to provide testimony on this item. Um, I am not sure if there's anybody at City Hall, uh, Phil, if you can double-check with anybody that's in that room.
Oh, double-check, what? Sorry, Katie, what was that?
Is there anybody else in, in City Hall right now that wishes to speak on this agenda item?
No, there is not.
Is there a line outside still?
Uh, let me, let me check with Joanie, real fast.
There is, there's, uh, there's two people here to speak on item three, I believe, the third item, so. But if you'd like, I can run downstairs and, uh, and just double-check and cover all our bases, so.
Yeah, we wouldn't want people waiting and then not to get in, and if we don't have, if there's not room for them, we may have to have the folks who are here for the third item step out so that we get to the first.
Okay.
Or get, you know, get people an opportunity.
Sure, I, I will, Katie, do you have something to say?
No, I, thank you, Phil, I was just gonna clarify for people at home watching that City Hall's limited to 10 people right now, so that's what's going on.
I will run downstairs, I'll be right back.
Thanks, Phil.
George, do you want to provide any background about the COVID procedures while we're waiting?
They're changing.
Yeah.
They're getting, they're getting more restrictive, as, you know, as the numbers have changed, the governor did a issue, uh, some new guidelines yesterday, and so, um, you know, before we had had it to, uh, you know, during one phase, it had been 50% or 50 persons, 50% capacity or 50 persons, whichever is less. Then as we went into the mitigations, it was 25% or 25 persons, whichever is less, and now with tier three mitigations, uh, we're at 10. Um, we may be moving to entirely virtual, you know, but, uh, hearings, I'm not really sure what, you know, and it's anybody's guess at this point. We're, we're still frankly, we, we, you know, we try to keep the public informed, and of course, you know, make, make decisions that allow the, uh, largest amount of transparency and transparency and participation. Uh, but it's a bit of a changing landscape, as we all know.
Chairperson Harris, uh, nobody is waiting outside to speak on this item.
Can we, the statements of fact? Can you hear me?
There you go, when you speak up, Victoria, we can hear you, so you might want to talk just a little bit louder than normal.
I think I'm shouting, can you
It's working, though, we, we can hear you, and it's
Not anymore.
Oh.
Okay, so, just to kind of, as we're getting it together here, we have heard from the applicant's representative or his son. The applicant didn't want to provide anything else at this point. We don't see, appear to have anyone else speaking for or against the item, is, is that accurate? Ms. Simpson?
Can we go to the findings of fact now?
Ms. Harris, I've put the staff report, the findings on the screen for the board to, if you, if you'd like to act on those, or if you'd like to adopt them separately, that is up to the board.
I would like to make a motion. Go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead, Tyler.
I'm just
As a whole? Okay, motion is made, it says action by board. Is that ever written that?
Uh, I think we're gonna need to hear that motion again, at least I did, I didn't get it.
We made a motion to approve it, uh, in, in total, but I'm asking a question about that, it says action by board of zoning appeals. Is, is it ever written that way, instead of zoning board of appeals?
They're used synonymously, like in our zoning ordinance, you're referred to as the BZA or the ZBA, so.
A motion to approve in this, is there a
Do you need me to restate my motion?
Yeah, that would be helpful, and I think, are we looking first at approving the findings of fact set forth by staff in the report? I didn't, I didn't quite catch your motion, I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, it was just approving the findings of fact as a whole, including the condition.
And I, and I propose that the condition is to have a fencing that's at least six feet tall.
I second that condition. And we're talking about also enclosing the dumpster?
Mr. Valentini, is that part of your motion referencing the dumpster as well? Mr. Valentini, is that part of your motion, referencing the dumpster as well, Ed?
Yes.
There is a second to that motion. Approving the finding of fact with those two conditions.
I second it. I second.
Don't know who that is.
Are we ready for a vote, or is there discussion first, just vote? All right.
I'm sorry, did we get who the second was for the minutes?
It might have been Strazza, but I'm not sure if it was Tyler, but I, I seconded it one of the times, so.
All right, so Tyler and Strazza. Okay, ready for the vote. Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And Chairperson Harris? That passes?
Okay, so that approved the findings of fact, and also as they pertain to the conditions. Ms. Harris, should we move to the, hold on, the special, recommending the special use condition, I mean, sorry, the special use permit with the conditions?
Yes, let's move to vote on the permit. With the condition. And we have a roll call for that.
Are we waiting for, do we need a first and a second, or just straight to roll call?
Well, we need a motion and a second.
And I'll second it.
Valentine seconds it?
Valentine.
Okay, Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes.
That passes?
All right, the special use permit will go to City Council in probably the 14th of December, and if, if the applicant and his son could please leave the City Hall area to make, make space for the other participants, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, and good luck. Okay, move on to item Z 2520, 108A and 113B Meadow Ridge Drive.
Oh, no, Chairperson Harris, I was just gonna, I was going to take the opportunity to introduce Caitlin Kelly, our assistant planner, Caitlin is, is gonna do the staff report for this item.
Okay.
Caitlin, I'll, I'll share my screen if you can just let me know when to advance your slides.
Yeah, that'd be perfect, thanks. Okay, um, so for this case, the applicant is applying for a variance to install a perimeter fence with the finished side facing toward the property. Staff is recommending a denial of the variance, as the petition does not meet all the standards for a variance. Next slide, please. As you can kinda see in the aerial view, there is an existing perimeter fence, it's six feet tall, it's legal nonconforming, and that the finished side faces toward the Meadow Ridge subdivision. It's been in place for at least 24 years, according to the applicant. Next slide. To the north of the subdivision, there is a multifamily apartment complex, and the parking lot of which abuts the rear yard of those northern units. To the south, there is single-family residential, to the east, there is single-family residential as well, and to the west, it's vacant, it was formerly dairy production, but it is a manufacturing zoning. Next slide. Yeah, and as you can see here, that's just a closer look at the adjacent zoning for the property. Next slide. So the existing perimeter fence, it's worth noting, is the only substantial screening between Meadow Ridge and the parking lot to the north. To the west, there is landscaping, but some of it's overgrown, likely due to the, the property being vacant at this time. And then to the south, the fences of the single-family houses, their rear yard fences have been installed with the finished side facing out. I think I have a photo on the next slide. Yeah, it's unclear to staff who has ownership over the, some of, some of the southern segments of those fences, but when we conducted a site visit, it was apparent that the sides, side yard fences at the single-family houses to the south have been installed with the finished side facing out. Next slide. So as to the findings of fact, the first being the property has physical hardship or practical difficulty that makes strict adherence to the code difficult, the standard is not met, there is the screening issue, as I mentioned, but there are no physical characteristics or unique features that would make strict adherence to the code difficult. The variance would be the minimum action necessary, the standard is met, alternative courses of action would require property owners to the north and to the west to bring their landscaping, screening into compliance, so that standard is met. The special conditions and circumstances creating the need for the variance were not created by the action of the applicant, this standard is not met, the existing fence is considered legal nonconforming, and it can be repaired and maintained without a variance, the variance would allow for reconstruction of illegal nonconformity, which is prohibited by the zoning ordinance. The next finding, this granting the variation request will not give the applicant any special privilege that's denied to others by the code. The side and rear yard fences of adjacent properties to the south all appear to have been installed with the finished side facing out, and further allowing reconstruction without identifiable hardship could establish residence, so the standard is not met. Finally, that the granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare, or alter the essential character of the neighborhood, this standard is met, the variation would maintain the visual character of the subdivision as it's existed for the past 24 years, there are no anticipated impacts on public welfare or the character of the neighborhoods where the variance to be granted. And that's it for my staff report.
Are there any comments or questions to the staff report and the findings of fact as they were given? I have a question, Caitlin, the other fences are in compliance or not? The other fences are in compliance?
They are.
Okay. Are there any questions of the statement, the description or the findings of fact? If that's the, are there, are there any witnesses who wanna speak to this, or against it? We have some letters, is that correct, Katie?
We do, we have, the applicant, Becky Gray, is at City Hall, I believe she's standing up right now, and we also received a written comment as well, which I can share after, after this testimony, I'll pull it up for you.
Okay, can we have the applicant's testimony, will the applicant please share?
Yep, can you see, can you see me?
And swear that you'll tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and then give us your application.
My name is Rebecca Gray, and I do swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and what else do they need?
Description of.
Oh, the description. Our request was to have a variance on our fence, our perimeter fence for the property. If I can back up a little bit, and I apologize, I'm gonna keep pulling on this map. The apartment buildings to the north, when that development was developed, we were all one big area out there. The same developer developed the three apartment buildings to the north of us, and then crossed over and made the small little horseshoe development of Meadow Ridge Drive, where there are 11 units, which are side by side, so it makes it 22 units. That was back in 1995, 94, 95. The apartment buildings were completed prior to them working on the Meadow Ridge Drive units, and when I purchased out there, I inquired with the builder if there would be a privacy fence installed. He said, yes, we're putting one all around the Meadow Ridge development. So the fence to the south, where you're saying that all the homeowners have installed properly, is truly one that we installed, or the homeowner, or the contractor installed to encircle our properties. So none of those homeowners south of us installed those fences, with the exception of 1001 and 1003, they did have theirs installed, but the rest of those 5, 9, 11, 7 in there too, 1,000, on Chicory Lane. So having said that, unit currently, the faces, the fence is facing inward on the south end for the two homeowners opposite side, they did theirs face out like they were supposed to. That happens to be butts up to half of the property at 113B, so we, we have to go face side out, half of her property's gonna be face side in by the fence, and the other half then of her property is gonna be face side out. So she's gonna have to look at that mess. I think probably why the land, or the, 24 years ago, I, I just was looking for a place to buy and to live. I didn't look into all the landscaping, what's gonna be done, what's not gonna be done, or what should be done or shouldn't be done, but the landscaping there for those homes belongs to us. In fact, one of the homeowners on the other side actually attached to our fence and put a face side in, in their backyard, we discovered in the process of trying to do this little project. Understanding, yes, the fence is there and it can be mended, and I will tell you, we have amended it multiple times. The majority of us out there are retired, or getting close to it, and we take that, we've taken that on ourselves, simply because we can't afford to hire somebody every time something happens, that's why we're going with a full fence replacement, we want it done, we want it done right, it's gonna be guaranteed, but we're getting too old out there ourselves to do it ourselves. I mean, I don't know, I have some other things to say, but Sandy can jump in here, she's, she's another neighbor.
Well, I think that when Tom Oakes Sr. wrote this whole development, and he put the fence up.
Pardon me, excuse me, I think we'll need anybody who testifies to be sworn, and it would be useful if we could take witnesses, if we could take witnesses one at a time, so if there are questions for Ms. Gray, then those could be asked, and then, and then Sandy, if you'd like to testify, that would be, that'd be great.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Jean Kagan. Any questions for me, I mean, I know I've got more to say, but it's just all kind of, it's unbelated.
Question, Ms. Gray, I don't understand the configuration of the fence, how, why one is facing in and half is facing out, is there any way for what you're proposing to have the grid facing on both sides, is that construction possible?
No, I can't.
She's wanting to know if those two, when they butt up against each other, can be the same, and the answer is no, even for their law, because one belongs to them and one belongs to us.
We can't.
We can't hear.
We can't hear you, Victoria.
Can you, four questions of Ms. Gray.
Okay. I can't, I didn't get the question, I didn't hear you.
If there are any questions from, from the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If that's true, we swear in the second person.
Okay, I've, I've got a question, so, I mean, there's a fence there now, right?
Yes.
Okay, and it's facing, you know, the good side's facing towards your, your homes, right?
Correct.
And the, the plethora of this is that you want to replace it instead of continually mending it, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So why not replace it with the, you know, the good side facing outward like code requires?
Well, that's, that's what, that's what we're supposed to do, didn't know that when we wanted, when we decided, when we started this process, but I'm getting at the, at the neighbors at the other end, per property then, half of it's gonna be face side in, and half of it's gonna be face side out, because the two people on Chicory Lane, off of Morris Avenue, 101, 1001 and 1003, put in fences, so that's not our fence, we don't, and that's not on the map that I gave you, it's not highlighted to be completed.
I, I understand, but that's only two locations, or two of the homes, right?
True.
Out of the whole, you know, the whole U shape.
Well, that's two homes on Chicory Lane, but the way they, the way their property aligns with our property on, on Meadow Ridge Drive, that individual that lives in 113B, half of her yard, in her backyard, she's gonna have a finished fence, and then the other half is gonna be, it's gonna be face side out.
Katie, can you show us on a map again what she's talking about, would that be helpful?
It would for me. I think it's that second to last slide.
I think it was too. There.
That's it, right there.
So.
Okay.
Katie, could you kinda point out what, what that area is she's talking about?
Caitlin. We're in the south end, Katie.
I, I think it's the next slide, after this.
No, no.
No, it's not, there it is.
That's, that's, that's the fence, and that's the fence of 1001 and 1003, but it, I don't think you got a picture of where we had to butt up to it, when it, when ours was built. I don't think that's in your picture, if you go back one, or forward one, where those fences were at?
There.
Right there, all right, that doesn't, that doesn't show where we had to connect our fence to the existing homeowner's fence on Chicory Lane, when ours was built. But it, there's a jet out of about 12 inches in the back of, of unit 113B, she will have the, the, the face side will be facing her from the street, because the neighbors installed it with the unfinished side on their property, but the finished side is on our property, but furthermore, it's on one of the homeowner's properties, and then, but it only goes halfway because of the, the, just the way the properties were aligned, they weren't aligned, you know, exactly together. So then she's got half of her property is face side in, like we're seeing here, and the other half, if we have to install face side out, she's gonna have half of it face side in and half of it face side out, when she looks out her patio door, that's what she's gonna see, when she's out in her backyard, that's what she's gonna see, when she tries to put it on the market, that's what she's gonna have to deal with.
I guess, couldn't you finish, couldn't that section of the fence be finished on both sides? I, I don't know what would, what would cause that, just that, those stretches there where you're gonna have mismatched fences, have, have the, both sides of the fence finished, and then it will be, you know, even across the whole. and then it will be, you know, even across the whole, the whole property?
We looked into that, and it's cost prohibitive for us as an association to do that.
What, you're worried is one of your, is it your property that you're worrying about there looking out the back door, or is it...
No, sir, it's not. It's one of the homeowners in 113B, it's another homeowner out there.
But that's not one of your properties, right?
Yes, it is.
It is.
It is.
We personally don't own that one.
Katie, can you show me again on the, on the overall map? Highlight the mouse or something, exactly what section we're talking about?
On that.
I'm muted. Okay, so I think, Becky, is this the, these are the properties of 1001 and 1003 that you're referring to?
That's, that's what, that one where you have the area, arrow now is out, property is one of the units on our property. But that is also where the property, the people behind them have put in their own fences. But that line, the black line that's drawn there, it's drawn too far close to the actual building. I mean, it's, it goes back clear over to the next unit, halfway between the next unit. So it's not a solid line there. And none of the pictures you've taken, or whoever took them, what you're showing, shows how that has, how we connected to that fence that existed.
So this is your site plan that you submitted, and the highlighted part is the fence that you're referring to. And then this, this building down here is the, the building that I just, on the last slide, had my mouse on. Okay. Does that help? Is that what you were trying to convey?
Does it seem like the area that's not highlighted is the area that we're talking about with the in and out?
No. Well, yes, yes. When, what you, once you, where I ended the highlighting is in the middle of that homeowner's property. That's where our fence ends, facing in. The other half is, is the people that live behind, you can see there how the property lines are a little different. And so they put their fence in, and it faces out towards us, finished side, and out towards her on the finished side. But then if we have to erect ours unfinished side in, she's looking at, that's what her backyard's going to look like. And I don't know property value. I mean, people are going to, why would you want to go buy something when it's half in and half out? And, I mean, I don't know. And it's been that way for 24 years, so 25 years.
Possibly. You said that it was cost prohibitive for your association. Did you approach the homeowner to see if they could help cover some of those costs?
Well, when the fence is the responsibility of the homeowners association, it's hard to go to them and say, can you help pay for it? They're already paying for their share of the other part, so now we're asking them to pay for more. That's, that's just, I mean, we would rather not have to do that.
So another question is, have you already started construction on this?
No, absolutely not.
What did he say?
That we started construction.
Oh, no.
We've got the, we've got a bid, we've got a, we put down a down payment. We're going to do it, but he knows that he can't start until we had this meeting. Now, I'm done talking. If Sandy wants the other witness that's here, if she would like to speak?
Sandy, if you'd like me to throw you in, could you please state your name, address?
Sandra White. Sandra White.
And you swear to tell the...
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
I think so, too.
Any questions, or would you just like to make a statement?
Well, I'd like to make a statement. My statement is that this has been here for 24 or 5 years. And I know the reason that the builder did it the way he did it. And first of all, the rule you just have now wasn't in existence. But as a former Realtor years ago and property owner, I do realize that in this particular location, as you drive through this little subdivision, which is kind of an entity all of its own, that the good side, finished side of the fence enhances it tremendously. There would be no Realtor on the face of the earth that showed any of these properties for sale would not say that this fence enhances all of our property, because you can see it in so many, all the way around the horseshoe shape. The people on the other side, it's in the situation that we have, could care less about what a fence is looking like. I mean, a parking lot, people, those apartment renters could care less what that fence looks like. They're just happy to have a fence in between. We, we're probably more happy to have a fence than them. They don't really care about it. The other one is up against a, what used to be a cow pasture at this point in time. Now, maybe it will be something later down the road, I don't know. But it's really far away from what would be finished. The people on the other side have all put landscaping in. In fact, they have a tree in one place that's knocking down our, our fence, because it is overgrown, our fence. But value-wise, property-wise, for the people who own property in this little area, I can guarantee you, not one of you would grow, would drive through there and not notice how pretty the fence is this direction. Well, right now it's falling down, we, it is in disrepair. But that's beside the point. It looks a whole lot better as a fence this way than it will if we're having to look in the back. And a, as a, you know, property owner, we want to help stabilize the value of these, these nice condos that we have out there. And so...
Single families.
Single...
Single families, we're not condos.
I mean duplexes, we're duplexes. It's basic, yes, we're attached a little. But anyway, that's all I can say. I just, I, I, I feel we are, we need to help promote the, the, keeping the property value up as much as we can, and I can guarantee you, without a shadow of a doubt, you would agree with me if you drove through there and looked at that fence, especially when it gets to be new and nice again.
The small part that, that you're talking about, have you questioned how much it would cost to just put the good side on both sides of that small part?
Oh, yes, very cost prohibitive. We can't afford it. And there's about five of us widows there, and there is no way we can double the price of that. We're lucky to afford one side of the fence.
The project as it stands now is costing us $35,243.03.
Is landscaping an option?
No, it is not. Part of it's on a hill that you can't plant. We've had to cut down the trees that are on there, because the hill is prohibitive for that.
Any other comments, questions for the test, testifiers?
I'm sorry. Did she ask any question? I think she says...
Chairperson asked if there are any other comments or questions for the witness.
Ms. Harris, there, there, I just wanted to point out that we do have a, a person who registered to provide additional comment on this item. And then we also received an email in support of the fence variance.
Katie, if you could out there, at least I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
We have the, can we have the comments from the person who is there?
So we have Mr. Gary Lash, he's on the phone, but he's currently muted, so you may have to hit star six to be able to talk.
I think, can you hear me?
That's him.
There you are. Have we heard, have we heard from, is Mr. Lash speaking in favor or against?
I'm against.
Have we heard, and this is just a matter of procedure, sir, we'll certainly get to you, but I just, have we heard from everyone, Ms. Simpson, that we feel that is going to be speaking in favor?
I believe so. Nobody else, other than Mr. Lash and Ms. Gray and Ms. White, registered to speak on this item.
Anybody outside, do we know?
Any.
There.
You had an email, didn't you?
We do have an email as well, that's, that's in support of, of the application, but...
Can we hear from that? Can we hear from the email, or have you read it to us?
Would you, Chairperson Harris, you want me to pull that up, or?
Can I, guys hear me?
Yes, Mr. Lash, what we're doing first is we're taking everything positive, and that way, you and those speaking against it will have an opportunity to respond. So I, my understanding is there's a positive email, so we're going to get that into evidence on the positive side, and then we'll start the testimony from those who may have, be in opposition.
Okay, and my name is Leach, L-E-A-C.
Oh, Leach, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, I know the Leach and the Lash, that...
So, Ms. Harris, we received an email from Joe Cheeto on 101 Meadow Ridge Drive. The, the email is up on the screen, I can read it into the record if you'd like. But it is, okay, so I'll read this. "The homeowners association is petitioning for a variance while replacing an existing board fence. The new law has the posts and rails on the inside and finished board, boards to the outside. We, the property owners, want just the opposite. We want the finished side boards facing homeowners to remain facing the property holder. This is a replacement of, of existing privacy-type fencing. This is Meadow Ridge subdivision lots 9 through 22, pens 2117-257-045 through 2117-257-032." "Having the board side out would be responsible for fencing, hiding trash receptacles and trash sites, as in commercial buildings. This project is replacing existing fencing that has deteriorated over time, and we, the owners, are trying, are trying to keep the, the looks up in our subdivision. Hence, we would like the finished product to have the board side to face our homes, as it does currently, maintain the current look with new, but with new materials."
Who are there? Any comments about that submission? If not, can we go to the opposing comments?
Mr. A... Yes, yes, I'm here.
Swear, state your name and swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, please.
Okay, my name is Gary Leach, L-E-A-C, and I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
And you're test...
I, I own the property at 210 Greenwood Avenue, and that is on the west side of their, of this fence. The, I have several issues. The reason the fence has deteriorated so bad is there's been no maintenance or upkeep on the fence. They have let the trees grow up on both sides. They do no maintenance whatsoever. And then, this is on my side of the property, it's over 500 foot of fence. And by them not maintaining that, that means I have to go down and work and clean on 500 feet of their fence. That, that's quite a job. The other thing is, is when they put the fence in, now I have property line markers all down through there, and that shows each of their, each of their, where it divides their property, their posts are on the property line. They're not six inches within, you know, the fence was built illegally, because they have, the boards that they want facing their side are six inches inside, but the posts are actually in and out on the property line itself. There's no post that's six inches inside the property. The trees and vegetation that's grown up there is, and the reason they're having problems with trees and things is because they don't do any maintenance on the fence. They came up and talked to me...
Sir, excuse me, this is Chair Boyle, I just, pretty much what we're looking at is which side of the fence should be facing in which direction, right? So I meant, seems like the vegetation and the location of the present posts, I mean, are somewhat irrelevant to the factors of which direction the fence should face. Can you address that?
Well, the, the problem being is, is the way that fence is, it makes my property look bad. You know, that, if they put, if they don't come, when they, if they do rebuild the fence, you know, my property's going to look a lot better with new boards and with the fence properly installed to code. Where if they put it back to the way they have it now, we're going to end up with the same issue. We're going to have a fence that is, that they don't maintain, and it's going to make my property look bad. I'm trying to, I bought this property a year and a half ago, and I'm trying to go down through there and clean and, and fix it up to make my property look better. And I don't want to, you maintaining their fence, and then if I go, whenever I've been down through there and tried to do anything, I've got some of the... Complaining about how, you know, about me trying to clean up down through there. So, like I said, in the fence, you know, that, that, these people need to work with the neighbors more if they actually want to replace this fence.
My neighbor.
And like I said, is, is, I, I would, to me, one of the things that I need to bring up here is that they want to put a fence back in the same place, and that fence is on my property.
But, no. Obviously, we're going to put it where it belongs.
With respect, just to speak to the people who are present and the physically present, there will be an opportunity for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you could just let him finish, and the other ones finished.
Here's just about the direction of the fence to be put up. And do you have a statement opposing the direction of the fence to be put up?
Okay, and, and who am I, who is asking me this question?
The chairperson here.
Okay. Yes, I do. I, I want the, I want the fence installed per code. With the, with the, with the boards that are the, you know, I want the good side facing my property. Like I said, that, you know, they want to talk about what it does to the value of their property, but it does the exact opposite to the value of my property.
Any questions? Are you, are you done, Mr. Leach, with the basic part of your statement, ready for questions?
Yes, I...
Are there any questions to Mr. Leach about his application?
I think the applicant had some response.
Well, first of all, are there any other negative, or not negative, but, you know, each person speaking against the application? Ms. Simpson?
No, Mr. Boyle, nobody, nobody else registered to speak on this petition. And I, there is no one else present at City Hall.
Do the, do the applicants have questions for Mr. Leach, or are they, are they just wishing to make some rebuttal?
Rebuttal.
Okay. Is that okay with you, Ms. Harris? Should we proceed to that?
Can I speak then? Okay. I wasn't sure, I just don't want to step out of turn here. I'm going to take his back ways again. Back into 1995, 96, 97, whenever this fence was originally installed, there were no trees. The fence was built, and the trees grew up. We have trees that have the base of their trunk on Mr. Leach's side of the property, and it's growing under the fence, and grew up on our side of the property. We have trees that, there's one down the way yet, that grew on our side, but managed to get itself to grow, however, before it was, you know, very... managed to get itself to grow, however, before it was, you know, very big, ends up on Mr. Leach's property. I did approach Mr. Leach about maybe getting some trees taken down, if we're gonna go ahead and do this fence, and the fence is down, maybe get rid of tho-, you know, eliminate those trees. Um, we have since, uh, and I'm sure Mr. Leach has noticed this, just last week, I believe it was, had the tree, tree people in there, and they took the trees out of that fence line, so that when we do install the new fence, it can go in properly. Um, uh, but I reached out to him in hopes that maybe he would work with us a little bit on this, um, but he never returned any of my calls. But not only saying, it's just the fact that we didn't plant those trees there, the trees weren't there when the fence was put in, it was just nothing but an open area. So, shame on us, but they did offer some, some shade. We did clean them up on our side, no, we're not responsible for the trees on the other side of the fence, I don't believe anyway. I don't believe that's our property, to have to take care of those trees. Um, and yes, he did do some cleaning out there, I will, I will give him credit for that, and he didn't manage to knock down a whole section of the fence, that he said he would take care of. He did not, we took care of it ourselves, we gave him the bill, and he didn't reimburse us for it. So, you know, he says something about us trying to be neighbors, but I think that works two ways, and I'm not trying to be vicious here. I tried, I've tried to work with him, I've tried to reach out. And, I mean, I guess I just don't understand why he says we've done such a terrible job with tree maintenance. The trees we planted.
This is George Boyle, and I'm not going to, uh, I'm not the chairperson, so I can't really rule as to the relevance, or their objections, or whatever, but I would say, I don't notice that, that, uh, the maintenance aspect is necessarily in the factors that are being, uh, that are relevant to, um, the requested variance. Perhaps I'm wrong, Ms. Simpson, I don't know if you can.
That's, I'm fine with that.
Can I ask a question of both you and Ms. Lewis? Is there any possible negotiation for both of you to share in the direction of the fence to, to double direct it? Do you have a good site on both sides to share the cost of that?
Well, um. He can, he'll have to, he'll have to decide that, but I would venture to say that he's not willing to shh, share, you know, ex, encounter that expense. But I can't speak for him.
Is, is Mr. Leach?
Yeah, yes, I'm still here, wasn't sure if they were done. Uh, the, you know what, I have no problems, I, I've talked to Mrs. Gray one time in person, and, uh, or actually, maybe twice, but, uh, I was never given a bill, you know, we're supposed to be telling the truth, no one's ever handed me a bill for any fence, uh, there was not a section of fence knocked down by me. I, I'm not sure where they're getting this information, uh, and talking about the, they want to talk about the trees and things, and.
I think, I think, Ms. Harris, excuse me, sir, I think, maybe you didn't hear Ms. Harris, I think she was asking whether you would be interested in collaborating on a fence that had an, uh, a, that was facing your property. Ms. Harris, could you, I think you asked a question, did you not, I, I, maybe I misheard.
Let me know, interested in collaborating on the expense to have the fence facing your property, the good side and that property, do you have a double-sided?
Well, the problem being is they're saying this is their fence, period, and that I have no, no say or anything about it, and their way of, how they came and approached me was either I gave in and gave them the variance and let them put the fence up, or they wouldn't put a, they wouldn't replace the fence.
That's nuts.
But the question for you right now is, 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 is if the good side, which side the good side is facing, would you be willing to share in this fence to have a double-faced good side?
No, 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 they're, you know, no, not at all.
Thank you.
That, that isn't even, because the fence is still gonna be on their property, why would I spend money on a fence that doesn't belong to me? That doesn't make any sense.
All right, that's, uh, I think we got an answer on that one, um. Any other, uh, questions for the applicants on rebuttal? I, I'm sorry, Ms. Harris, I don't mean to be speaking over you here.
Thank you.
Who's talking? George, George, babe.
I think, Mr. Valentini, did you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Okay, if we have no more statements, I think we can vote.
More for sure, yeah, and his.
Sorry?
We're putting a new one where it's supposed to be. I don't, I don't.
It's, it's kinda hard for us to talk when you guys are talking as well. Can we do a fight, is this the part where we do the finding of fact? And if so, my motion is to, um, vote on each one separately?
I second that motion, if I can.
Uh, since it is put in the form of a motion, and, and, uh, let's go around on a roll call vote, and then, uh, we'll look at each factor separately.
Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris? Wait it. You gotta yes, right, it's unanimous.
Okay, motion carries. Katie, can you put up the first, or whoever is, I guess that would be Katie. Put up the first standard there?
Thanks, George, I, I have, uh, the standards on the screen. The first standard is that the property has physical hardship or practical difficulty that makes strict adherence to the code difficult. Um, Ms. Harris, would you like me to see if there's any discussion? And then if there is none, then we'll have Ms. Smith call roll on this, on this, uh, standard?
Yes, please.
All right.
Okay.
I'd like to just point out, as people are considering this, that the ordinance provides that a variation from the terms of the code shall not be granted by the Board of Zoning Appeal, zoning appeals, unless and until fi-, findings of fact are demonstrated, submitting, uh, demonstrating all the following, so all the factors, all five factors need to be met in order for a variance to be awarded. So if we're, people are going in that direction, that's the, that's the standard. This is different than some of ours where, you know, three out of five, four out of five is good enough, there has to be five out of five on these, for the variance to be awarded.
Thanks, George. So, uh, so once again, the, the first standard is that the property has physical hardship or practical difficulty that makes strict adherence to the code difficult. If there's no discussion, uh, Ms. Smith can, can call roll on that item.
I think there may be discussion, do we know? I'm sorry.
I, I'm getting head nods, or head shakes, I guess, not nods, opposite. Um, and, uh, and a positive vote would be that the standard is met, a negative vote would be that the standard is not met. Or you can just say met or not met, however you want to do it.
Right, yeah, let's do met or not met.
Okay.
For clarity.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Mr. Valentini?
Not met.
For, for clarification, can you repeat? Did you say not met?
Not met.
Not met. Mr. McFarland?
Not met.
Mr. Strazza?
Not met.
Mr. Noonan?
Not met.
Ms. Williams?
Not met.
Chairperson Harris?
Not met.
Not met. Six not mets.
Thank you, uh, the second standard is that the variance is the minimum action necessary. Is there any discussion on this standard? I'm seeing some noes, um, so, Ms. Ha-, Ms., uh, Smith, if you want to call roll?
Mr. Valentini?
Not.
Mr. McFarland?
Met.
Mr. Strazza?
Met.
I'm sorry, Mr. McFarland, there was some feedback, that was met.
That was met, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Noonan?
Met.
Met. Uh, Ms. Williams?
Met.
And Chairperson Harris? Thank you. Six mets.
The third standard is that the need for the variance was not created by the applicant. Any discussion? No? Okay, uh, Ms. Hair-, Ms. Smith, can you please call roll? You're muted, Ms. Smith.
I thought I wanted to say, I'm supposed to lie in this hearing.
Star six.
Well, he did, didn't he?
Mm-hmm.
I haven't called yet the statement.
She was, she was here.
It looks like, uh, we're happy, we can't hear you, Ms., Ms. Smith, do you want me to call the roll?
She was here a minute ago.
Oh, okay, I, I, I remuted. Sorry, trying again. Mr. Valentini?
Not met.
Mr. McFarland?
Not met.
Mr. Strazza?
Not met.
Mr. Noonan?
Not met.
Ms. Williams?
Not met.
Chairperson Harris? I'm sorry, Chairperson Harris?
Met.
And, uh, not?
Not.
Thank, thank you.
The fourth standard is that the variance will not give the applicant special privilege. Any discussion? No, I, I, then, uh, Ms. Smith, if, if you'd like to call roll?
Mr. Valentini?
Not met.
Mr. McFarland?
Not met.
Mr. Strazza?
Not met.
Mr. Noonan?
Not met.
Ms. Williams?
Not met.
Chairperson Harris? I always have trouble at the end, um. Not met?
Not met.
Thank you.
All right, in case, in case Katie's getting tired, I can read the fifth one, which is that the granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare, alter the essential character of the neighborhood, nor unreasonably impair the use or development of adjoining properties.
As well done, George.
Thank you. We're, we're all hanging in there together on this one.
There, there appears to be no discussion. Uh, Ms. Smith, do you want to call the roll?
Mr. Valentini?
I have a question, is George is there? I have a little trouble.
Yes.
Civic contract, anyway, um, the standard says nor unreasonably impair, it usually says nor, um, actually impair, those are, those both give a lot of leeway, what, what the standard's worded differently in different places, substantially impair, unreasonable impair, are those, um?
Are you comparing what I was reading to what's on the screen? Is that what you're saying, or are you asking about the term?
This one says not unreasonably impair, the other one's saying not substantially impair. What is, what is that we're supposed to have? And, and those designate different unreasonable or substantial?
Well, with respect, at least to this particular factor, that's, that's the one I can address. I mean, so we've got some, some things here, we talk about essential character of the neighborhood, we talk about nor unreasonably impair the use or development of adjoining properties. Um, unreasonable has to do like, right, with a reasonableness standard, a rational, kind of a rational basis. Substantial has to do with a quant-, in a sense, a quantification, right? When you're looking at a, and substantial doesn't appear, at least in, in the version of the code I'm looking at here. So, I don't know that it's relevant to this factor, but often substantial is with, in comparison to insubstantial, right? So, that's, that's almost more proportional, whereas reasonable relates to, um, irrational relationship.
The other difference.
Reasonableness is more like a, a logic, you know, than, than, than the proportional comparison involved in substantial. I'm sorry, Katie.
No, I was just gonna say, the other difference is that the, uh, the substantial impairment is, is a condition, is a standard for the special use permit, and the unreasonable impairment is a, is a standard for the variance.
Okay, so I think we're.
For a vote, I think, on the proposed.
No further discussion, um, Mr. Valentini? I think you're muted.
I am, met.
Met. Mr. McFarland?
Met.
Mr. Strazza?
Met.
Mr. Noonan?
Met.
Ms. Williams?
Met.
Chairperson Harris? Met. Um, do you?
All right, so we have, I, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask if you want me to recap, but go ahead.
That might be useful, uh, I think we have, was it three, uh, three mets and two un-mets, or, I don't know if you have them quantified or not?
Uh, the, the other way around, I have three not-mets and two mets.
Yeah, okay. So, um, I think now we can proceed to a vote on the petition itself, and as I noted before, if all five factors were not met, the, uh, variance petition, uh, would not be approved, but we need a, we need a final record and, and the, uh, the vote on the petition. So, maybe we have a, a motion whether to allow it or not, and then if the vote is to yes and no's on that?
Can we have a motion to vote on it in total?
Sure, I make a motion to vote on the, uh, the variation as, as good.
Second.
So what is yes going to be?
Um, yeah, yes, let me, is not approved. Why don't we?
Let's, uh, we have something in our ordinance on this.
George, so the, the motion is that the variance is denied, is that, is that the motion you've got right now? And a yes vote would be to approve that motion denying the variance. Um, are you asking?
Was that your, Mr. Valentini, were you ask, were you moving, maybe I misheard the motion?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so it was a motion to deny the petition? All right. Okay, I'm sorry, I misheard.
Are we ready for a vote? Okay, um, Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris? Was it, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Chairperson Harris? Yes? Okay. Um, six yeses.
So, the, the variance has been denied, uh, city staff will send a notice of decision to the applicant and, um, inform the applicant about their next steps. So the, the variance has been denied. Uh, city staff will send a notice of decision to the applicant and, um, inform the applicant about their next steps and what they can do.
Let's move on to SP 0820, an application for vehicle sales and service, oh, vehicle repair.
Okay, um, Ms. Harris, this, just so you're aware, we have a, a number of people who've registered to speak on this case. Um, and there's also a few people transitioning and coming into City Hall right now as well. Um, and, sorry, and then staff received some public comments, written public comments that I've forwarded onto the board, and then after I forwarded those, we also received an additional public comment, so I can, I can bring those up at the staff report if you, if you'd like.
Is, is the applicant present or on the call?
We have, uh, Mr. Villa Gomez is on the call. Uh, he's currently muted, so, uh, I, I will unmute him when it's, when it's that time of the, of the thing. And then, I'm unsure, I can't see who's in the City Hall conference room, but there may be some other people here i- in the conference room too. But, let me go ahead and share my screen. And, uh, Ms. Harris, are you ready for the staff report?
Please.
Okay. Uh, so SP 08 dash 20, this case is, uh, for a auto repair facility in the M1 district, uh, at 604 West Division Street. In addition to the special use, uh, the, the applicant is requesting a number of variances. Um, also, the, the initial application that was submitted was for an auto repair facility as well as a vehicle sales facility, but it's staff's understanding that the vehicle sales would be happening on a different, uh, address, um, in a, in a different location, like, next to this, but on a separate piece of property, and so it's our, it's staff's understanding that the applicant has requested that that portion of this application be continued until December, when they're able to, uh, submit a new special use permit for that other property. So, in the staff report, there's a recommendation to table that portion of the, the variance to allow vehicle sales. That's what staff is referring to, um, until that second application can, can be presented. Um, okay.
The staff report related to repair only.
And, um, I'm gonna speak slowly. We still have, we're still getting some people here in, uh, in City Hall, um, we're transitioning, people coming in, people coming out, so I was just told that it's just taking a little bit.
Katie, is this, so this petition is really with regard to services?
Right, vehicle repair. Um, vehicle repair, and then, you know, in the future, once that other special use permit is, is, uh, applied for, then the sales aspect would come into, to play.
You have, and maybe this is a question for later, but, um, in your recommendations, it's the same for the repair as well as these, uh, sales?
Um. Do I, uh, no, I, the staff report was written primarily just with the repair in mind. We didn't do our analysis looking at sales yet. Uh, okay. So, um, staff is recommending in favor, but because of the, the nature of this site, it's, it's a, I'll show you on the screen in just a second, but it's a, um, it's a ma- uh, manufacturing district that has residential across the street. So, because of the residential, we're asking some, for some additional conditions to help mitigate impacts, like, uh, fencing, and then also making sure that any inoperable vehicles are stored on the site and screened from view of the residents, a- as well as, uh, making sure that all lighting is facing down and not shining into the, into the neighbors' properties, just having the cutout. So, uh, the, the, um, here are some photos of the subject property. Like I said, it's at 604 West Division Street. It was originally, uh, the building was built in the seventies, and it's kind of a, a pole barn building here. It was, it's about 10,000 square feet, and was originally used as a PIMCO, uh, kind of vehicle, PIMCO repaired gas tanks, and, and, um, so they would use this to, to do some maintenance on their fleets, as well as repair any additional, you know, uh, things related to their, to their operations. It wasn't, it wasn't used as an auto repair service. It's, like, open to the public, so that's where there's this change of use, um, because you've gone from vehicle repair or, or fleet maintenance for a private entity to this, this, um, public, public use. Um, here's another photo of the site. There is a, an area that's shown on the site plan that's currently screened, um, where employees can park. And, uh, the, the property is located at the southeast corner of Division and North Mason. Um, just north of the site is the Bloomington Water Plant. Um, it's also, uh, near the town of Normal, so Division is our literal division, um, between communities. Uh, west of here are, are single-family homes, uh, and east of the, the site is railroad tracks, and there's a, a pretty thick screen between the, the building itself and the railroad tracks. There's also a, a change of ingrate on Division Street, um, kind of the aerial view. The, the lot itself is about three quarters of an acre.
The west side, that separation from the property line to the residential is only about forty feet, kind of the width of Mason Street. The ordinance also prohibits vehicle sales in conjunction with an auto repair facility. So, the staff is under, it's our understanding that the applicant would like to also offer vehicle sales and use this property at thirteen twenty-one North Mason for that. They're requesting a variance from that condition to allow vehicle sales from that prohibition, so that way they could store some vehicles on this site as they're occasionally being, for occasional sales. Staff is requesting that the ZBA, you know, consider the sales part at a later date, you know, once you have, you know, you could, the ZBA could motion to table that portion, that variance, and consider that at the same time that this additional special use permit for vehicle sales on the property to the north is submitted for review. Or the ZBA could take action on that variance request today, but I think the staff recommendation was just to table that portion of the current application and focus on the repair and the repair nature of the business. The other variances requested are front yard setback here along Division Street. The code requires a forty-foot setback. The existing building is ten feet off of the property line. And then the rear yard setback, the code requires twenty feet and the existing building is pretty close. It's almost directly on the property line. Looking at the comprehensive plan, you know, there are a number of different goals, prioritizing infill redevelopment and prioritizing, focusing on expansion and retention of the existing business, but that needs to be balanced with the neighborhood goals of, you know, ensuring livable neighborhoods and ensuring sensitive transitions to residential. And so that's where staff is recommending additional screening here that would block any cars from the view of the neighbors. I can't see me pointing, but screening along Mason Street to help shield, to help shield, you know, their, the neighbors, the residents' view of any inoperable vehicles, of any repairs that are happening, and also of any headlights that might shine into their homes at night. Looking at the standards for special use, we've broken down our report by the special use and then the variance as well. So, looking at the standards for special use, you know, there, let me back up one second. Sorry, I didn't talk about the traffic. So, one thing the board is to consider is the impacts of the use on the adjacent neighborhood. As I mentioned, this is a change of use. It previously was not used as a commercial repair facility. Based on engineering estimates and trip generation models, an auto repair place will have a peak of about thirty vehicles coming and going at their peak hours. So, that's usually in the evening, people are dropping off and picking up and employees are leaving. You're gonna see, you know, roughly three trips per every one thousand square feet. So, for a ten thousand square foot shop, you could see around thirty, thirty trips is kind of the estimate. And then also just based on, similar to the previous case, based on the accessible parking requirements, you know, an additional space would be needed. But that's an easy fix. So, you know, the standards that the ZBA considers are the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the special use will not be detrimental to and endanger the public health, safety, and welfare. Staff looked at these standards, we, you know, felt that a lot of them could be met by these additional conditions, you know, such as adding screening, adding some hedges or some sort of landscaping as well to soften the appearance and provide that barrier, help absorb sound and light from the repair and the residential. That the special use will not be injurious to. This is the nor substantially diminish or impair property values. You know, once again, with the screening on the, with the screening on the west side of the property that helps address some of those negative impacts that can happen on residential uses. Also, just want to point out that the property is zoned manufacturing, and so there are a number of other uses allowed in that manufacturing district that could go here that do not require a special use permit. So, when looking at, is this proposed use going to be more detrimental than some of those other permitted uses? You know, that's something to balance and to weigh. Obviously, we want to mitigate any impacts that we can, but also, I mean, this is the opportunity, if there's gonna be any screening added, this is an opportunity for that to happen, because other uses could be established by right without necessitating or triggering the screening requirements. So, that's where, you know, I understand that there's maybe some opposition, but that's something else just to consider as well. So, the, we have received some concerns about parking along the street. There is on-street parking permitted, and that can be addressed by requesting that the on-street parking be removed. That type of request is handled by the Public Works Department and goes through the Transportation Commission for review. They handle the on-street parking. Ingress, there's no changes proposed to the existing ingress and egress. And staff is recommending those additional conditions to help mitigate the impacts, the additional screening, a minimum of a three-foot fence. It is a front yard, so four-foot would be the highest that is allowed by code, but there could also be some additional landscaping added to soften the fence as well as, you know, as long as it's not blocking visibility in and out of the property. We don't want to create an obstruction that's gonna be a safety hazard, but additional landscaping could also be added to provide some softening and further screen. And I can answer any additional questions you might have. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not done. The variances, as I mentioned, there's four variances being requested. You know, because everything is existing, it's, and to encourage, let's say that you were going to build this new and meet the code, you would, the applicant would actually be pushing the building up closer towards the residential. So, in its current placement, and by having those additional variances, the building is set back further from the residential properties across the street. So, if the applicant were to move the front yard setback to forty feet, for example, the building would be pushed up this way, and the rear yard setback, the building would be pushed up that way towards the houses. So, looking at its placement, the variance is requested actually help kind of facilitate the building's siding further away from the residential area. So, we're recommending in favor of the requested variances as well, but asking that the vehicle sales portion be tabled to a later date. Go ahead, Mr. Bounce.
So, you said that was, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Now, this was a PIMCO location where they did repairs on their commercial fleet. So, there was automotive or, I assume, large vehicle repairs there already before.
So, I touched base with our fire inspectors, and because this was before my time at the city, I couldn't find really good documentation showing that, but according to the fire inspectors, they had used it for kind of like minor maintenance. I don't know that it, the inspectors didn't seem to think that it was significant, you know, repairs, like replacing engines, but changing tires, you know, fixing smaller fleet maintenance and then kind of tool maintenance.
I didn't think it had the traffic this would have, right?
The PIMCO didn't, I don't believe the PIMCO had the same amount of traffic.
But you go back to whatever timeframe, you said that there was auto sales, you know, at that prior location, that's not in consideration for now, there had to be some type of traffic flow at that point.
So, that's, I kind of moved this back. There was an auto sales, you know, permit issued here. I don't know the nature of the sales, if it was like a, where you would have them on display and anybody could come, or if it was kind of like a Corvette where you're doing more online sales. I'm not sure about the exact details of that.
But all the properties, all these buildings you're showing us were at one point or will be at one point ownership of one person or one group?
It's staff's understanding that they were at one point owned under common ownership, and then I believe it was in, it's in my report, I think it was in twenty eighteen, they were subdivided and sold off. So, the six oh four is under a different ownership, and the applicant is actually the tenant renting the space, and then one thirteen twenty-one is under a different owner, and so is the property to the north.
You know what the property to the north is being used for now?
I do not. You know, just from our site visit, it was, it was difficult to tell. Based on the photos, it kind of looks like it's maybe storage or office for some other type of use. I don't believe it's still being used as vehicle sales.
Thank you.
George, if I have small corrections that are mainly scrivener errors, do I have to state them for the record? I don't want to be a pain in everybody's asses, including mine. I mean, and everybody's behind.
Are you talking about scrivener errors in the staff report? What? No, but I would imagine if you have questions that you think are substantive to the issues before, folks, maybe those would be the ones that would be less painful and more relevant.
They're mainly scrivener errors.
You can email those to me, I can.
Okay, good. Okay, are there comments about the staff descriptions? The staff report? If not, can we move for a statement of fact, the findings of fact?
No, I think what we need to do is, we need to proceed to the testimony. I think, my understanding is there's a number of people who wish to speak to this. Is that accurate, Ms. Simpson?
There are, and we do have the applicant on the phone as well.
Can we get the applicant swear in?
So, Mr. Villa Gomez is currently muted. He'll need to hit star six to unmute himself in order to be able to speak over the phone.
Mr. Villa Gomez, would you please state your name and swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and describe your application for a variance?
Hello, my name's Diego Villagomez, and I do swear.
Good, we can hear you. Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Diego Villagomez.
Okay.
And I do swear.
I think Ms. Harris had asked you to make a statement about the project in your request.
So, we are wanting to get the special use permit so we can fix cars, our repair facility at six oh four West Division.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Villa Gomez? Okay, thank you. So, we have some witnesses to speak for the application or against the application. Thank you, Mr. Villagomez.
No problem, thank you.
We have Mr. Tom Snyder, Thomas Snyder, on the call, and he is, I believe he's speaking in favor of the application.
Mr. Snyder, can we swear you in, please, to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
This is Thomas Snyder. I swear to tell the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Hello?
Yeah. I think you could proceed to a statement, sir, unless there's questions from the board.
Okay. Again, my name's Thomas Snyder. I own thirteen twenty-eight North Mason Street, straight, directly across the street from All About Auto on the corner of Division and Main Street. I'm a business owner and a homeowner, and I believe in what they're doing, the American dream. I've watched them since the beginning, whenever PIMCO started moving out. You know, PIMCO hauled off a lot of items, no, they emptied that dumpster at least ten, twelve times, quite a bit. But these guys came in, they, you know, painted the building, they moved a lot around, they got rid of a lot of stuff, they cleaned the lot up, you know, they painted, well, they painted three sides of the building, from what I understand. They're gonna take care of the other side, because they was gonna build another building there. But the, you know, All About Auto, so let's see where I'm at, okay. They cut down trees, they dug up cement, they put up a fence. I know you guys talk about the light being too bright. Actually, I love the light being bright, it lights up my front yard, so, I know, no big deal, but hey, you know, they planted shrubs, they planted flowers, and they did all this work themselves. I was impressed, because they do their auto work during the day, they'll back over in Normal, and then at night, they'd be over there working and cleaning the place up. They're doing a great business, and they have, you know, since they've been open, they use the street for parking. Yes, it's a public street, and they have the right to use the street as well as everybody else up and down the street. That's one item that I have mentioned, that the cars should be on the lot at night and not at the street. But as a business owner and owning the property, I support them. I hope and pray these guys continue to have a thriving business. Small businesses are the backbone of America, and right now, there are a lot of them going under due to the pandemic and the state governments. One more item, All About Auto used to be in Normal, they were paying taxes there, now they're paying taxes in Bloomington. So, you know, not a million dollars, but, you know, it's tax money. We can use all we can get in Bloomington, from what I understand. So, thanks for listening, and I hope you grant them everything they need, because I think they're doing a really good business. And I live on the corner, right across the street from the Bloomington Water, the Amarin, and, you know, catty corner to the Comcast. And I'll tell you right now, since Comcast has left, the traffic is nothing compared to what Comcast had when they were there. No, they used to have their payment office over there, so, okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Snyder, for your collegiality in your testimony. Are there any comments from Mr. Snyder? Any questions?
Mr. Snyder, how long have you lived there?
Bought the property September two thousand seventeen.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah. I do have one other comment, if that's all right, Ms. Harris.
Sure, sure.
Okay. No, I've just been curious, since they've been talking about the building down at the end of Mason Street, at the cul-de-sac, you know, I've lived here for three years. That place used to have cars all over the place, in the street, you know, flat tire trucks in the driveway, and the place looked a mess, but nobody complained whatsoever about that. So, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. So, can we go to the next witness?
Ms. Harris, that is everybody on the phone. We do have some people here, President City Hall as well. I don't know that anybody else is signed up to speak in favor. I believe the next testimony is in opposition.
Okay. And that would be whom?
Hello. Hello, my name is Dwayne Young, thirteen twenty-sixth North Mason, across the street from this company that's there, All About Auto. I've been at thirteen twenty, go ahead.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I swear.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name and spell it as well?
Dwayne Young, D W A Y N E Y O U M G.
Thank you.
I've lived here for twenty-eight years at thirteen twenty-sixth North Mason. When PIMCO was there, we never had the problems we got now with the parking on the street there. I have a phone pole right there at my driveway, so it's hard for me to cut out. I gotta cut, when I back out, I gotta cut up towards the cul-de-sac. I went over and told them that I have a handicapped stepson that comes over every once while, with him going, no, the car's parked over across the street, he's gonna have a hard time. If we had a fire department had to go up there, we'd have a hard time getting the fire trucks up there, the way they parked the cars over there. They're doing it on purpose to me, because I went over and asked them, and then I told them to move the cars so I could get on my driveway, and they told me, you keep complaining to the city, we're gonna keep parking our cars here. And on the weekends, they'll put cars in front of my house, and everybody else will be gone. I'm worried about my taxes, or I'm worried about, if I go to sell my house, and I go there to sell it, get what I got into it, I'm worried about crime over there now, because when PIMCO was there, they were very quiet over there. They did not work on no automobiles over there. They worked on gas pumps, and that's what they worked on. And if they did work on any autos, it was their service vans, that's all they worked on. This neighborhood's been quiet, and all of a sudden, these guys come in, and I went over and I asked them politely, can you leave me room? I leave at five o'clock in the morning, I leave, I get home at five o'clock at night, it's dark out now, it's hard to see when you back out of the driveway, because I have a work truck that has an air compressor in it. Polite, I'm all for small business, but I was polite to these guys, went over and asked them, they could give me room. They moved them for two hours, and then cars went right back. Then, I went out one night, I can't, I gotta park my pickup truck that I use for work in my backyard. This was a nice, quiet neighborhood until these guys came along. Like I said, I'm all for small business. I don't think I could sell my house for what it's worth. I'm worried about crime over there right now. Basically, I don't want to have any car dealer shit over there. I mean, why would they want to sell their cars in a residential area over there? Like I said, I've been there thirty years and had no problems.
That's your neighbor standing there lying to the teeth.
Who's lying?
Okay.
Okay, so you read the student complaints about the traffic in there and the parking?
No, the parking on the street. I understand you can park there, but, I mean, come on, after five o'clock? I went out one night, said, would you move your car so I can get on my driveway? And all they said is, we're gonna keep parking here, and there ain't nothing you can do about, you keep calling the city every day. I called Scott Black, called him one time, and then now he's gone, and he said, well, we're working on the issue, they're trying to get parking to where they can get out of the street. Like I said, on the weekends, and I have pictures on my phone, where they have plenty of spots out there to put them cars in their parking lot, and they won't do it. My homebody's down, like I said, I'm worried about crime. They can say what they want, but I got pictures, and they know I come out there, because they got cameras outside, they know I come out, when I come home, and I take my phone, and I take pictures. But there, it's like they're targeting me, because, hm, they think I'm calling the city all the time. I've called Scott Black once, but it's ridiculous. The street probably entered twenty-four, okay? He'll explain.
Thank you. Are you ready for questions, sir?
Do the board members have any questions or comments? If not, thank you for your statement. Katie, do we have any more witnesses there?
Yes. My name is Henry Doughty, and I do swear to tell the whole truth. Some of your pictures there was kind of interesting to me, and I don't have a problem with small business. However, at their old location, they had a lot of the same issues that we have now at their current location, with parking employees' cars, customers' cars on the streets. They know the ordinance has to be moved every twenty-four hours. They also know there's nobody to control Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, and they will park vehicles on the street on Friday night and leave them till Monday. They've got cars over there that are unlicensed. We've seen transactions that appear they're already selling cars out of the lot. I have witnessed them when they were remodeling their business, take concrete and dump it on the railroad's property. If you look on the property lines, they're on the pictures you had, on the east side of their property next to the railroad, there's a driveway that accesses that property that they have now dug up concrete, put asphalt millings down, and so on and so forth, and they're using that property, which, you know, I don't feel is right. My question to you guys with the zoning, don't they have to comply with water retention, water runoff, the number of parking spaces for their employees and their customers? The other issues I have, I'm watching TV in the evenings, and I keep seeing reflections in my living room, and I'm looking out the window, and it's their cars moving around. I witnessed them eight o'clock at night the other night, weeks ago. I'm like, what is that noise? What is that noise? What is that noise? They're out there on a skid loader, cutting out the grass to make more parking at the setback that they're asking for, the hundred and twenty. They're already encroaching out towards the street. So, you know, I don't agree to give them the variance. I think if you guys have them put up fences and landscaping, you know, we need something in there that says they have to maintain the landscaping, the fences, and so on and so forth, and then what, you know, repercussions if they don't do it, can you guys put in there? That's one of my questions to you.
Okay. Thank you. We do have some provisions in place that we're going to consider about lighting, so thank you for your statement. Are there any other questions or comments?
In regards to the lighting, I have people that I work with that live across the railroad tracks, and they've made comments to me that the light on the back of the building shines across the tracks and into their bedroom windows at night.
We are taking that into consideration, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more comments? If not, we have another witness?
Yes.
Please state your name and swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
My name is Cheryl Doughty, and yes, I do. I agree with the first gentleman that talked. It's a small business over there, they do a lot of work. The workers are very busy, I've witnessed this myself, but they're very disrespectful to our neighborhood. Unfortunately, there's, to me, one day, there was almost twenty cars parked down that street on the east side, across the street from me, I live at thirteen twenty-two. And if you park another vehicle on the west side, and if it's a bigger vehicle, I do not think a fire truck is gonna get down that street if there's a fire. An ambulance might be able to sneak by, garbage men have trouble getting by, they go very slower, they'll pull over their arms a little bit so they can get through. To me, that's a safety issue. They have a golf cart that they use across the street, they usually will run it on the grass from six oh four West Division clear down to thirteen fifteen North Mason, because they have something going on in there also. They do. They do detailing in there, we've all seen them do it. Thirteen twenty-one is their office, that's directly across the street from me. That is so busy, it drives you crazy, you can't even enjoy your home anymore. They have people going in and out, they've blocked my driveway, they have done work out in front of my house. And the other day, they had, we're doing work on a vehicle between my house and the neighbor's house. That needs to be done at six oh four, not on the street. I have issues with that. Like I said, they do good work, but do I think that business should be there? No, it's too big for what they've got going. And we wanna put a used car lot in there too. Mason Street's gonna be so busy, you're gonna have, everybody's gonna wanna move. I, I, we were there six and a half years. The quietness we had, the comfort we had, is gone. And we didn't even know that business was going in over there. I come home one day, All About Auto's office is right across from my house. I have no clue they're moving over there. And I don't think the city did either. So, I mean, I just, it's very, very frustrating. On October thirtieth in the evening, I was outside getting my mail, I heard screaming and yelling in vulgar language. I'm like, this is ridiculous. I went up front and I told them, I yelled, I said, can you please stop? We don't need to hear that. And I have grandchildren that come over, I do not want them having to hear that. This special use permit that they have, is that for, is all their business supposed to be coming out of six oh four West Division? Is this correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they got their office across the street from me at thirteen twenty-one, and they got a detail shop at thirteen fifteen. So they're going, taking the golf cart and going from six oh four, they'll stop at the office and they'll drive down to thirteen fifteen. The other day, they were doing, running down the street. That's another safety issue. If you're backing on your driveway, you're not looking for golf carts. I mean, you're looking for a vehicle. And that's just, that's another safety issue. I would like another fence to be put up on the south side between their parking lot at six oh four and the building at thirteen twenty-one North Mason, so I don't have to look at their dumpster anymore, their cars. They had a truck over there parked for about three weeks. And I don't have to watch tow trucks tow cars in there. I want that blocked off. I, I don't wanna look at that on my window. Like I said, the neighborhood, neighborhood didn't even know they were gonna move in there. They just moved, and then moved right across the street from me. I don't think they need to have that business on Mason Street. We, that street is too small. It's got a cul-de-sac down at one end, and there was only one exit and one entrance to that street. It's just not big enough, I'm sorry. And then we add another business on that street. We're gonna have so much traffic in there, it's just gonna be ridiculous. I mean, it just is. But I don't, I don't want him to have to close his business down, that's not what this is about. The small business, he's a young kid, he needs to work. And he has a lot of hard workers over there, I see them. But the disrespectfulness that's going on and what they do, that's gotta stop. Something has to be done.
Thank you, we are addressing the problem of having, of parking being on the premises and being screened. That is going to be addressed, thank you. Are there any more questions or comments of this witness? If not, thank you very much for your testimony. And we have another witness?
Yes.
Could you state your name and swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
My name is Gene LaGrand, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
It's a small business, and somebody had a problem with getting in and out of his driveway with his truck. And I believe they can address that problem by just marking it off somehow so they don't park cars there when he's ready to come home. And I, I rented him the building of twenty-one on, for their office building. I owned that block before. So, they told me that I could put any kind of business I wanted in there. It was strictly industrial, commercial, and so that, that's what he assumed. And that's what I was told when I bought it to build it. So I built a shop on the other end, so I could have something to do when I retired, rent it out for a little income. And we, we did have a bunch of cars out there, and I took care of that. So it's pretty clean right now. And other than that, if I have to, I can make some more parking on the grass. But if you wanna, you know, take all the parking off the streets and put it on the grass, why, that's another problem. And we don't have any grass. Because it looks pretty across there when I mow it.
Okay.
Sir, so are you speaking in favor or against the variance?
No, I think it should be, it should be there. That's why I intended it to be. And, yeah, that's why I told them, they can rent my office until they get their building built. They wanting to put another building on the backside next to the railroad off the street there. And they've gotta clear out a spot so they can have drain, proper drain and everything. So they're trying to get a permit for that too.
All right.
We're just trying to grow, grow the town.
Okay, thank you much. So, witness in favor of the variance, are any other questions for him? All right, thank you very much.
Ms. Harris, we've had somebody else call in, but I'm not sure who they are, they did not register in advance. Do you want me to unmute them so they can talk?
Please.
They'll have to hit star six. And if- I'm not sure, I don't know, it's a five-three-zero number, so I, I don't know if that person is on the call or not, but they should be allowed to speak if they hit star six.
Is that person on? Is there a person on? Is he, is the speaker on?
It appears to be unmuted, so.
Could you state your name, please? And swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Is the witness there? If, if the witness is there, could you please speak up?
We also- Well, Ms. Harris, we also received some emails as well.
Hello, hello Katie?
Oh, hello.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is George Boyle. My computer, my desk computer and desk phone died. So I called in on my cell, and that's, that was-
Oh, that was you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Katie, could you read the, read what was sent in?
Sure, so we've, let me share my screen here with you. There's, we received a number of emails in, in advance. There were seven of them. Do you want me to read all of them, or can I just, you know, spend some time and scroll through each one?
Katie, were these provided to the board? I think most of them were, right?
They were provided to the board, and then I also mailed, emailed them to Mr. Schultz, the, the attorney for the applicant, and, but he does not appear to be on the call. So, Mr. Villa Gomez, I sent these to him just right before this item via email, but I don't know if he's had a chance to look at them as well. So, if, if it's okay, George, I'll just pass briefly around each one, and then for the applicant, and then, and then we can move on to the most recent one that we received. That's all right.
Let me find out, Mr. Gomez, Villa Gomez, I'm sorry. Have you had an opportunity or to look at these, so that you'll be able to address and or respond if necessary?
One second, I think I may have to. Phil, can you unmute Mr. Villa Gomez, please?
Yes, I have unmuted. Yes, I did receive the emails, I did read them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We just wanna make sure we keep things balanced.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So in that case, Katie, if there's anything you need to add, fine, otherwise, perhaps we may have enough.
We did receive an additional one after that, so that is up on the screen right now with questions. It was from Mr. James Derringer, and it questions about the impacts on property values. And it's another email in opposition to the, to the petition. And that is, that is all that we've received.
All right, so are we gonna be moving to rebuttal at this point?
Can I ask one question?
Yes, who's speaking?
Yeah, this is Henry Doughty again. Did, did you receive the packets that my wife had emailed to you with the pictures that shows all the vehicles either on the street or on their property and?
Oh, Ms. Harris, those were included in the, in the packet with the staff report, they were attached to the, to the-
We have all those pictures, yes, we have all those pictures.
I have to apologize having missed a portion of the call, but is that all the testimony then, from those opposed at this point?
Yes.
So now, may we proceed to allow Mr. Villa Gomez to provide any evidence he may have in rebuttal?
So, okay, my name's Diego, I'm back on here. We were doing a lot so we can get most of those cars off the street. So that shouldn't be an issue for the neighbors. I do understand where they're coming from, and I am very understanding of that. And that's why we are right behind the fenced area. We are grading all that so we can get more parking, get the employees off of the street and into our property at six oh four to help out with that.
Okay, thank you.
And about the, the language, I had no idea about that, this is the first time hearing from this. I apologize. If, I actually went up to her when we first opened up and introduced myself and told her that if there's anything that I could do to help out, anything that bothers her, just to let me know. And I never did hear anything from her again until just now. So all this is a surprise to me, because I went to all the houses across the street, introduced myself and, and let them know that we are there to help them out. And then, to my understanding, actually, her son came to me for repairs, and we were just talking about how he has a small business himself, and he was happy for us to move in, and that his mom lives across the street. So, like I said, I'm very just surprised about everything, that they're so upset about the parking.
Okay, thank you.
And one more thing about this screening, we're just waiting for, just for you guys to let us know what you guys want, and we can put it up immediately, that's, that's no problem at all. That's it, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you very much for responding. Are there any more questions to the applicant or comments?
I do. Mr. Villa Gomez, the majority of the cars that are on the street, are those repairs or are those employee cars?
So, at least five of them are employees, and the rest, the job is completed, we put them on the street just so the customer can just jump in the car and take off. But nothing that needs repaired or broke down on the street, not at all. It's just, cars are just ready to go for customers to pick up. Over the weekends, that's another thing that I'm surprised about, is over the weekends, Friday before we leave, we do put in all the cars into our lot, so we can leave the, the street empty for our neighbors.
So is it your goal, once we, you know, as you continue, to make sure all the cars are on your lot? Or will you still have a flowover?
On the lot, sir. I mean, all we want is just, we wanna work in peace and also to just have the neighbors happy too. I mean, we, we don't want the neighbors to be upset at us regardless of the decision. It's not how we do things here, so of course, we'll get them off the street to make them happy.
So if the variance includes a three-foot or a four-foot fence or shrubs for that size to deter lights and sound, you're, you're fine with that?
Yes.
And all inoperable vehicles shall be stored on site? And families coming for the residuals, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep, yes, sir, they are now.
A question just further on that, if you have a vehicle that's ready for pickups, there should be some kind of time element there, so it wouldn't be there like for twenty-four hours to be picked up, right?
Yeah, of course, actually, we close at five o'clock, so all the cars, most, most all of them, ninety percent of them are all off the street by five-thirty. So that's another thing too, is that, I mean, we, we don't want cars on the street after closing, after hours, because, I mean, we're responsible for those cars. So we put them back onto the lot. So anything, cars in the street, if they are, everything's gone by five-thirty. Maybe there could be one because they're picking it up after hours, but that's rare.
So it sounds like, Mr. Villa Gomez, I mean, you've, you've done a lot. I mean, you've owned a building, you're trying to make improvements, you're filed for, you know, variances, but it sounds like you're, you're doing your best to accommodate your business as well as the neighborhood. Can you also commit and make sure that you don't block others' driveways? And, you know, such like that, that could cause, you know, egress, regress problems?
Yeah, of course, we're, we're willing to do that. Like I said, I mean, from the beginning, when we first moved into that, that lot, six oh four was a mess. There was garbage everywhere, there was overgrown trees, piles of garbage between the trees, just a mess completely. The building was falling apart. We, we did landscaping, we mowed the yard on, every week. We picked up all the garbage, we cleaned up the parking, repainted the building, added gutters. I mean, we've done everything to make the place look a lot nicer. Actually, across the street, the town of Bloomington Water Department, the, the workers there always come to us and tell us how happy they are that, how nice the place looks. So, we're trying our best.
Okay, sounds like you are, thank you, Mr. Villa Gomez.
Thank you.
One final thing that we didn't talk about, but I think one of the dissenters talked about the lighting. There's a recommendation from the staff that all exterior lighting should have a cutoff fixture and be directed down and away from the adjacent residential properties. That's, that's, you can manage that as well?
Yeah, of course, yep, the guy who installed the lights, I will just let him know that, hey, there's some concerns here, and then this is what needs to be done, and I'm sure that he'll, he'll take care of it.
Thank you, Mr. Villa Gomez. Does the board have any more comments or questions to Mr. Villa Gomez? If not, can we move to the finding? If not, can we move to the finding effect?
So I, I make a recommendation that we accept the finding of fact with the staff recommendations of the fencing of a three-foot, four-foot fence or landscaping added to the boundaries, the west boundaries of the property. The fencing should obstruct headlights from the residential neighbors in accordance with the Division 13 and Division 12 of the city code. All inoperable vehicles shall be stored on site and must be fully screened from the residential boundary and public right of way on Division Street and Mason Street. And then finally, all exterior lighting should have a cutoff fixture and be directed down and away from the adjacent residential properties.
I think so. Let me, I'm trying to see if you, if you, if you covered all the stipulations. I think you did, right?
I tried.
Parking on...
So I think what your motion is kind of compound, right? One is to accept the findings of fact as presented by staff. And as a second component, that the conditions endorsed by staff be considered along with the, with the special use. Is that, is that accurate, Mr. Valentini?
Yes, sir.
You have a second?
I second. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Valentini? Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza? Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
I make a motion to accept all the, the variance, all in one vote.
Well, how about, can we have a vote directly on the special use petition itself now with the recommended conditions? So we're having a...
I thought we just did that.
Well, that was the finding of fact.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I know, it's hard to keep track of all the levels on this. This one's pretty, pretty complicated comparing to some of them.
There's votes on the special use, right? The three recommendations?
That could be a motion to accept the, approve the special use with the conditions that you, that staff recommended and that you endorsed with your last motion.
I think we need a second.
Oh, we need a second. We had the motion already. I would second.
And any discussion? Ready? Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris? Six guesses.
Okay, motion has passed. Good luck, Mr. Villanova, in your business.
I think we, we have to look now at the variances. And I think Mr. Valentini's motion was to, to approve the, to endorse the staff signings of facts relative to the four variances. And, and we may want to subtract that one. There was the one about it being, the variance being sale of autos. Staff recommendation was to table, table consideration of that. Do we have a motion to that effect? Or is that something that staff wants, or that the board wants to consider tonight?
I'd like to table the, the sales part of it. I'm second that.
We have a motion? We got a second, is that right?
Are you ready for a vote? Mr. Valentini? Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And chairperson Harris? Six guesses.
I think Mr. Valentini's motion had previously been to consider all four variants, excuse me, all the remaining variances together. Is that, was that the substance of your motions?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, and can we get a second on that? And then we'll see. I mean, this will be an opportunity for anyone who wishes to consider them separately to, you know, to discuss why they'd like to do that. Otherwise, we can, we can move on to the roll call, vote on that.
I second it.
I would...
All right, so...
Can we go to a roll call now?
Mr. Valentini? Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're considering all these variances at once. The staff have made recommendations that are in the reports, my understanding, Ms. Simpson. And are we going to, do we have anyone who wants to make a motion to accept the staff findings of fact with respect to the requested variances?
I make a motion that we accept this findings of fact with the variances. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Val...
Okay.
Mr. Valentini? Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
And now as to whether the variances should be approved?
I make a motion for the variances to be approved.
We have a roll call.
Mr. Valentini? Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris? Six guesses.
So the special use permit will go to city council on December 14th. The staff will send notice to the applicant. But just to kind of summarize, the special use permit for vehicle repair, 604 West Division was approved with, with variances to the setbacks and additional conditions to, to provide screening and address the lighting and inoperable vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Motion, variance approved. Good luck on your business, Mr. Villanova.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
I believe that's, those are the only issues we have. Is there any new business?
We do have, Ms. Harris, we have the dates for next year. I can pull those up on the screen. But there's also a copy in the packet. And the one I wanted to point out is that the September meeting, which was originally scheduled for the 20, I believe it's the 22nd of September, that falls on Yom Kippur. And so in your, the dates in your packet show a, a meeting on the 21st.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business?
We need a motion to adopt these and it will come to the, then to the city council.
I make a motion to accept all the new calendar events.
Seconded.
All right.
Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Okay, there. I'm sorry, Katie.
No, I'm sorry. I was just going to say the other items of new business are introductions to our new staff. So we have an assistant planner, Kaitlin Kelly, who's briefly introduced herself. But if you want, you can provide a little bit more background. And also our assistant director, Kimberly Smith. And then, not joining us today, but I'm sure she'll join us in the future is our, and we'll introduce her then, but our economic and community development director, Melissa Hahn.
I'll go first, I guess. I'm Caitlin. I'm a recent graduate of the U of I's Masters of Urban Planning Program. Prior to this, I was an intern at City of Champagne and they're planning to start it all over here. And I look forward to working with you all.
We do, too, Caitlin. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hello.
Welcome, Caitlin. And I think we can tell you that most of our meetings are not quite this long. But that's, but that's not a guarantee of future performance.
No, I've definitely attended meetings that have run two, three hours. So this is not, not unordinary.
Well, I'm missing my Mid-Central Community Action meeting that was started at 6:00.
Now, council meeting with so many people.
And we have another introduction?
Hi there. I'm Kimberly Smith. I'm assistant director and I'm coming to you from Peoria. I was there about 21 years. I was a planner there. Before that, for the City of Urbana, I was there about three to four years. Also a graduate of U of I. I have a, my undergrad and my masters, first masters are both in urban planning from U of I. And then I have an MBA from Bradley University. So I'm very excited to be here.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you.
Did you work with Caitlin over at Urbana, Champagne?
There's a big time difference. I was, it's been more than 21 years since I was at Urbana.
My coworkers were her interns, from the sound of it.
And I got my doctor there before you. Kimberly, yeah, welcome to you all. So if that's all the new business?
Thanks to all of you for your persistence and your patience and perseverance.
And to you, all right? We can adjourn the meeting at 6:53. And our next meeting is when?
We are meeting in December, third Wednesday in December. Sorry, I'll look at the date. 16th.
Okay, we adjourn until December 16th. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe. Bye-bye.